Good evening. I want to welcome you to the Thursday, August 21st County Commission Meeting. Commissioner Tosterson is going to do the invocation and I will do the pledge. Would you please stand? Do everyone stand, please? Bow your hand. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for loving us and blessing us. Thank you for allowing us to do this as other county. And I would like to also pray for our, all the employees that work here and all the citizens of Glen County, our fire and rescue, our police, our EMTs. Bless them, keep your hand upon them. Bless this proceedings tonight and all in your son's, Jesus precious holy name. Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see, we don't have any presentations. Commissioners, I'll...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to propose a motion to defer item number 12 from our published agenda for tonight. That is to authorize the issue of a purchase order for Temple Inc. For the procurement of 11 uninterruptible auxiliary power supply and rack kits and 11 perform cabinet bases in the amount of $73,865 utilizing a cooperative procurement contract exemption. I'd like to make that a motion.
Second. Motion to defer item number 12. Properly motioned in second. All in favor?
And Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to make a motion to defer item number 16, which is AB-25-8. Abandonment of approximately 10-foot wide unimproved alleys in the southeast and southwest boundaries of parcel 04-03132, 4311 Ninth Street, St. Simons, until October 2, 2025. Board of Commission, leave.
Second. Okay. Defer item 16, properly motioned in second. All in favor? Thank you. All right, moving on.
But then, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve our consent agenda for general business.
Second. Okay. Consent agenda for general business. An exception if anything, some authority wants to pull. Nothing pulled. Okay, and second. All in favor?
And I think finally I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda finance with item 12 and 16 being deferred unless there's an item someone would like to pull.
Second. All right, finance has been properly motioned in second. All in favor? Thank you. All right, moving on. Public hearing. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position at the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be appreciated. Number 17, ZM 25-14, 3804 Whitlock Street. Consideration of a rezoning from general industrial to limited industrial at 3804 Whitlock Street for setback purposes. The property is owned GI, General Industrial, with a companion conditional use permit, CUP-25-2, and a site plan, SP 25-17, parcel 03-08559. Darrell Dawson, agent for Wertha Rentals LLC, Christian Wertha, owner. Mr. Carey?
Good afternoon. Christopher Carey, Senior Planner. Before you tonight, we have an application of rezoning for 3804 Whitlock. Here's the site. It is situated at the corner, approximately the corner of Whitlock and Towson. As stated, the proposed rezoning is to, primarily for the change of front setbacks. Here is a comparison of what is allowed from the existing limited industrial to, excuse me, from the current general industrial to limited industrial. This is a down zoning, so it is a change from more intensive industrial to less intensive industrial.
Okay, any questions?
Do we know the purpose for the request?
Yes, so the current structure or the current proposed site plan, which is, has not been before the planning commission, has different setbacks than what is allowed for the current zoning. So, the current zoning has a 50-foot front setback and the proposed has a 25-foot front setback. So here is that current iteration of that site plan. And the structure in the center is what the primary reason of this request is.
That's a new construction?
That will be new construction.
And adjacent properties, are they adhering to a 50-foot setback or are there properties along the way that don't have that?
So, this property would need a variance for the existing structures. So, the existing structures do not need setback requirements as they were permitted at one, built in the 80s.
All right. Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Carey. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of this, would you please step forward, state your name? You'll have five minutes. Seeing none, we'll close that. Anyone want to speak against this? Same things. Step forward, state your name. You'll have five minutes. Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Commissioners?
Um, put the motion up. I move to approve ZM-25-14 as presented.
Second. All right. CM 25-14 has been properly motioned. All in favor? Okay, thank you. You're going to do the next one, Mr. Carey? CUP 25-2, 3804 Whitlock Street, Whitlock Storage. Consideration of a conditional use permit for outdoor storage at 3804 Whitlock Street. Property is owned G, General Industrial, with a companion rezoning, ZM 25-14, and site plan, SP 25-17, parcel 03-08559. Darrell Dawson, agent for Wertha Rentals, Christian Wertha, owner. Mr. Carey?
Good evening. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. So, this conditional use permit is for outdoor storage, again at 3804 Whitlock. So, with the companion site plan, there is proposed outdoor storage as well as existing outdoor storage that is currently not permitted. So, the conditional use permit would permit that usage on that property.
And with the rezoning that we just did on the other, I mean, the same property, that this conditional use doesn't fall into the new zoning now that's allowed in light industrial?
So, outdoor storage is a conditional use in all...
All zones.
All of those industrial zonings.
All right.
What, what will they be storing? Because the first presentation, the photo I saw looked like a junkyard next to, in the fence.
So, the proposed was for materials. So, there's an existing, I believe, tile facility right here.
What kind of facility?
Tile or...
Tile.
Tile. And there was a proposed to have potentially some existing or, not existing, but some outdoor storage component for materials on this new site as well.
Okay, so it won't be cars?
I don't know if it'll be cars. I could defer to the applicant on whether there'll be cars there.
Okay, well, my concern is not creating a junkyard that looks like it's somewhere. I don't know if that is on this property or not.
I will let the applicant explain that.
All right. Thank you, Chris. All right, any other questions? Mr. Dawson, would you or the applicant like to come up and answer Commissioner Booker's question before I open the public hearing?
Yes, sir, be glad to. First of all, I want to say good evening to all the commissioners. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Booker, I didn't hear all of your question. I know it was about, was it car storage?
Right, in the previous presentation, it looks like there was some cars in a fence that may have been long-term and like a junkyard. And I was trying to figure out what would be stored in this area.
Okay. The owner does rent out some of those buildings that's on this site. And I think he does rent to one tow company. So, they do store cars in that particular building or around that building. But on the new site where he's looking to do the new construction, it's just going to be for personal storage, no cars.
Okay, all right. And I know this is primarily industrial-type business area. But it looked like those cars were, it was grass growing up a lot around him. So, he may need to get with his tenant about making sure that it's cleaned up.
Okay.
All right. All right, all right. Thank you, sir. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody want to come up and speak in favor? Five minutes. Please state your name.
You've worked, just a point of order, commissioners. With the action you took on item 17, item 18 ought to be reworded to be compatible with the new zoning you guys just passed. Right now, he's asking for a conditional use permit with the general industrial. He says it's the same. I haven't checked it out. I'm taking that at face value.
Can you speak up?
He says it's the same for both the general industrial as well as the light industrial. So, it really makes no difference. But for the record, it ought to be, you're approving the conditional use permit against the recent approved light industrial zoning.
Okay. Is that, you got that wrong? Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to come up and speak in favor? Seeing none, I'm going to close that portion. Anybody want to come up and speak against this item? Seeing none, we're going to close it. Commissioners?
If I can see the motion. I move to approve the CUP-25-2 with the, do I need to add special language here? As presented.
Second. All right, properly motioned in second. All in favor? Thank you. All right, number 19, ZM 25-15, Kia Brunswick Rezone. Consideration of a rezoning from local commercial to general commercial to allow for automobile service used at 6122 Altama Avenue, Unit 3. The property has a companion site plan, SP 25-21, parcel 03-00952. Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for SOBH Brunswick Properties LLC, owner. Mr. Carey?
Good afternoon. Christopher Carey. This is a rezoning from local commercial to general commercial to support the adjacent car dealership to the north. Here is your site. The proposed use of a repair garage is not allowed in the current zoning local commercial, which is the intended use. The intended use or the approved site plan is approximately 5,000 square feet and has six bays. And here's a comparison of the different zonings. So, from local commercial to general commercial, this would be an upzoning with slightly more intensive usage.
All right, any questions, gentlemen?
Chris, what kind of requirements would be in place for the waste materials associated with the servicing of the automobiles?
So, the waste materials, any automotive parts, they should not be outside. So, that is not allowed in that zoning district. So, any waste, any waste fluids, those would be handled by the state. So, those would have to fall in line with OSHA requirements and whatnot. So, there shouldn't be any mishandling of hazardous material.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Is there a phase one required for this additional, this site?
Not that I'm aware of. I'll defer to the engineer on that.
All right. When will he answer that?
Is he coming up now?
Yeah.
Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering. You said phase one, right? So, there was an existing building here before. The, it was a previous, previous building location with a parking lot there. Ultimately, we're just rebuilding on that same footprint area. So, there has not been a phase one completed. But from my understanding, you can see on the screen there, that was the previous building that was there. We're keeping within that same footprint.
Right, so there, I asked that because if it had something to do with automobiles, there may be some cleanup necessary.
So, so I would say, in the, in the future, you know, whenever somebody else purchases this, I would imagine if they wanted to demo the auto dealer or the repair garage, they would then likely complete a phase one on the, a future sale that were ever happened.
All right, this was the, all the insurance company that...
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, all right, I got you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. All right, open the public hearing for number 19. Anybody who wants to come up and speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone want to come up and speak against this rezoning? Seeing none, I'm going to close it. Commissioners?
Let's see the possible motions. I'd like to make a motion to approve ZM 25-15 as presented.
Second. All right, ZM 25-15, properly motioned in second. All in favor? Thank you. Number 20, ZM 25-18, Glen Marsh Multi-Family Rezone. Consideration of a rezoning at 77 Glen Marsh Court from PD to MR, medium residential. Parcel number 03-01885. There is a companion site plan, SP 25-20. Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineer, agent for Folly Holdings Incorporated, owner. Mr. Carey?
Good afternoon. Christopher Carey. So, this is a rezoning from PD to general residential. The existing site is governed by a plan development that has 120 approved units for a senior care facility. The proposed is for 128 unit multifamily that was approved by the planning commission. So, that site plan has been approved. The site is adjacent to other medium residential as well as single family and multifamily. One of the key differences in the change of zoning is a change in setbacks. So, the plan development had a 25-foot setback on all sides versus what is required in medium residential, which would be a 30-foot front setback, seven-foot side and rear setback. And here's a comparison of the different uses allowed and the different densities. So, the previous density or current density is 14.7 and the current allowed maximum is 100 or 16 units per acre.
Chris, what, what would be the parking space requirement for the units?
It should be two spaces per unit.
Okay, any, any other questions?
Is this a, this is for multifamily to single family, medium density?
This is multi, it's essentially multifamily to multifamily. So, the previous allowed was primarily for a senior care center. And now it's open to, it could be single family, it could be multifamily, timeshare, all the allowed uses in medium residential.
Medium density?
Correct.
Any other questions? I'm going to open the public hearing on this one then. Anyone want to come up and speak in favor?
Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering. So, one thing I want to add is it is a PD now for assisted living. So, ultimately, we want to go back to, I think, Chris can verify this, but want to go back to the zoning it was before, which was medium residential. And then the lots, you know, adjacent to this, they're on Village Circle, are already zoned, medium residential. We've got a... We got a multifamily development to the west and there's another one down the road to the east. So it's kind of in line with what's already allowed, just not limiting it, limiting it to the assisted living. As you spoke, the, the parking, we well exceed parking requirements. So the total required is a hundred, or two hundred and fifty-six and we have two hundred and seventy-three in there now. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Where would it, the egress be? And this property's been available for a long time.
That's right. So there's two points of connection. There's a, a right-of-way coming in here off of this intersection at the Village Circle on South Palm Drive. So that was one of the intended uses when planning this thing, this out previously. The right-of-way actually comes in and angles off here. And then also a secondary access point up here at this intersection, so creating a T-intersection up here.
So when you're coming around Glen Marsh, there's an area right there you're saying, this kind of loops around the other units, right?
That's right.
Was there any kind of traffic study done with this?
So not at this point. Whenever we submit it with the, to the county, traffic will have a chance at that point. Once we submit the civil plans, they may require a traffic study, but nothing's been, been required as of this point.
Cause I know South Palm has some, does it still have the traffic? What you call it, the bumps?
Oh, speed bumps, yeah.
Speed bumps. Because there was a complaint years ago about traffic and running, people seemed to go pretty fast.
Right. Well, I think-
Straightaway to seventeen.
Right. And I'm not sure if any, any public's here for this tonight, but I know at the Mayland Planning Commission meeting, we were talking with this lady who owns this house, her and her son were at the meeting. And I know we were working with them on, on, you know, talking about the site plan and kind of what's going on there. It seemed like there was support because of kind of cleaning this area up. From my understanding, it's been vacant for a long time and there's a, you know, an encampment in the woods there. And so as a part of some of the survey and everything, the landowner actually had the, the police come out and, and clear this, this site out, you know, to try to hopefully go ahead and start making this safer. So I think this is good for the area to kind of clean this, clean this parcel up.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's prime for a camp.
Right.
And, cause you can walk the water mark from here or somewhere else.
Right.
But my, my concern was just, I know we got complaints and that's how the speed bumps got installed.
Gotcha.
So that was one concern. No, Commissioner Sweat, it's your district.
Yes, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I'm familiar with the site. Seems to be an appropriate use. My concern with this area is no sidewalks and so that, that's not in front of us tonight. But I'll go ahead and go on the record early saying, I would like to see a look at more sidewalks in this area. You go through there, you see moms pushing little ba-, babies in the roadway and this is a cut-through street between Altama and Highway Seventeen. So that is my only concern. It seems to be inappropriate.
So I will say about the sidewalks, kudos to the county staff. That was a comment that they gave to make sure that we extend sidewalks to connect to both street access points for future connection for the, for the county to improve sidewalk connectivity.
Right.
As Commissioner, Commissioner Sweat said, this is a cut-through road. Is it gonna change and impede any traffic flow that, that it exists today?
To, to my understanding, no. Obviously, it's gonna increase traffic some. So that's something that we'll, we'll look into in the civil plan phase and, you know, should the county require a traffic study, which for many developments, they're requesting that now. And that's something that we'll look into when that time comes.
So the roads will, there will be no, any redirecting of roads?
No, no. It remain as, as is now.
And this is senior development?
It was a senior development and so we're seeking to just be multifamily. That's right.
Would this be gated?
At this point, it's not proposed to be gated, but that's not definite. I don't have the answer on that right now.
Will there be medical facilities inside this?
Like emergency call facilities?
Yeah, I mean, if it's a senior citizen, I would think.
So it was a senior or we're rezoning to not just limit it to a senior care facility.
Okay. I have no more questions.
Hopefully affordable?
I, I think so. I think that's the intent. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright, I'm gonna open the public hearing, ZM twenty-five dash eighteen. Anyone wanna speak in favor? Please come forward, state your name. Seeing none, I'll close that. Anyone wanna keep, come up and speak against? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Mr. Carey, could we have some motions? And Commissioners, it's back to you.
I move to approve ZM dash twenty-five dash eighteen as presented.
Second. Alright, properly motioned in second. All in favor? Alright, thank you. I had a little note I needed to make. Number twenty-one, CUP twenty-five dash four, sixty-one thirty-one New Jessup Highway. Consideration of a conditional use permit for an automobile service station in the general commercial zoning district. This existing business is located at sixty-one thirty-one New Jessup Highway, parcel number oh-three dash oh-nine seven-three-five, BY Patel, and I'm sorry, I can't say the first name. Carica one forty-two LLC owner. Ms. Christina?
Thank you. Good evening. Christina Wright, Senior Planner. So this conditional use permit for sixty-one thirty-one New Jessup Highway is to operate an automobile service station as a gas station and convenience store. Here's the location and zoning map. As you can see, the parcel's located on the western side of New Jessup Highway, just north of Perry Lane Road, within the GC zoning classification. Here is an image looking northwest on New Jessup Highway. Here's an image looking southeast on New Jessup Highway. Here's an image looking west into the property and looking across New Jessup Highway from the property to the east. Here is the site plan demonstrating that the project is in compliance with the current layout requirements of section seven, one-two dot three. So just to provide a little bit of background, the applicant came in for an alcohol and a conditional use permit. Over time, the property has changed ownership. We did a little bit of research. There was no conditional use permit for the property. And although the business is currently operational, there has been an amount of time that has lapsed so that any grandfathering or non-conformity would cease to exist. So just in general, they are meeting all the requirements. There is no residential that surrounds this area. It's immediately abutting commercial zoning classifications. However, we did discover the need for a dumpster. So this again was, our buffer requirements are much newer than when the building was actually constructed. So by screening the dumpster would bring it up to full compliance. And the findings summary, so just real quick, the findings are facts. So in addition to the hours and manner of operation, once again, just emphasizing the need for that type D buffer to screen the dumpster. The Mayland Planning Commission voted to approve unanimously, subject to a type D buffer. And here are your possible motions and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, gentlemen?
First of all, I, I don't understand these. They've been there a lot longer, fifteen years.
And Mr. Attorney, this is again, another one of these situations where we have a, where an existing business comes in to get a license renewed and they have to go through all this grief to get this. I, I would love to see it on an agenda soon that we address this and we cut out this nonsense. No reflection on you, Ms. Wright?
No. I kinda, I kinda agree with that. Okay. Any questions, gentlemen? Alright, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anybody wanna come up and speak for this conditional use permit? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. Anyone wanna come up and speak against this conditional per, use permit? Seeing none, I'm gonna close it. Commissioners, it's back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve CUP dash two-five dash four, subject to the type D buffer seen, to screen the dumpster.
Second. Alright, properly motioned in second. All in favor? Alright, thank you. Alright, number twenty-two, public hearing on the millage rate. Received citizen comments regarding the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six millage rates and consider adopting a resolution to establish a twenty-twenty-five millage rates for Glen County Board of Commissioners. Ms. Munson?
Good evening, Commissioners. We will go through this one more time. This is our third public hearing on the adoption of the millage rates this year. So bear with me as I go through this again. This is our millage annual, millage rate annual process. It begins with year-round property assessments that are done by the property assessor's office. In January through May, we work on the budget and determine what types of funding that we're gonna need to move forward with the budget. In July, we get a growth and inflation report from our property assessors that tell us what our digest value is gonna be. In June, we adopt the budget and the new budget starts July first. The end of July, we get the final property digest values. So when we're adopting the budget, we truly don't know the exact value of what our property tax digest is gonna be. So we are doing our best to, you know, balance those revenues and expenses in our budget with, with our estimates. In August, we have our millage rate adoption, which is where we are tonight. This slide just explains what a millage rate is and how a property tax is collected. And this is in here just for the benefit of a citizen that might be needing help on how to calculate their millage rate. In nineteen ninety-nine and effective January first of two thousand, the state of Georgia passed the Tax Payers' Bill of Rights. And this new law required that we advertise a property tax increase and hold three public hearings if property values are increasing due to inflation in the market. Even, and the millage rate is not rolled back to offset those increases. So what that means is the, the millage rate that we adopt, we have to compare the amount of revenue that we're gonna collect on the millage rate that we got last year with the amount of revenue we're gonna collect on the same millage rate this year. And the reason that that amount of revenue would be different is because property values in the market have increased. So there's a calculation that's done to tell us what the millage rate would be if we wanted to collect the same amount of revenue. That's called the rollback rate. So for this year, our current proposed millage rate is three point eight-six-four in the general fund. That is the same millage rate that we had last year and the prior year in the general fund. The rollback rate, which would be the rate that we would adopt if we were gonna collect the same amount of revenue as last year, wa-, is three point six-zero-nine. So we advertise an increase of seven point zero-seven percent in property taxes. Even though the millage rate is not going up, the millage rate is staying the same, we are still gonna collect an extra seven percent in property taxes due to inflation on values of property. On a home valued at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the difference in the tax bill would be forty-six dollars by adopting the proposed rate versus the milli-, the rollback rate. The total additional revenue to the county's general fund budget is approximately one point nine million. And if you have the Scarlett Williams homestead exemption, your taxes will not be affected by this. They will stay the same as last year because our millage rates are not changing. This is a chart of our proposed millage rates up for adoption tonight by district and by fund. Then we did have a little bit different of a millage rate proposal this year that I wanted to explain to you and the public. The, we did some movement between the police, fire, and EMS funds and the capital projects fund. So each year, and we do this every year, we evaluate the needs of each department and the overall capital needs in the budget. And we determine where best to allocate the millage rates. We try not to raise the rates. We try to keep the overall rate the same. So this year, the police, fire, and EMS budgets were, were able to be funded with a slight decrease in the millage rate compared to last year without negatively impacting their operations. So all three departments are continuing to have full budget for their staffing. They have, you know, full budget for their capital needs. There are no negative impacts to their operations. But we did have some large drainage projects that were requested this year for some neighborhoods that are flooding. And by shifting these millage rates between those three funds to the capital projects fund, we were able to fund those drainage, those two big drainage projects this year. So one thing that I wanna point out is that although the millage rates in police, fire, and EMS were slightly decreased, the amount of revenue that they are receiving is still increasing over what they got last year due to inflationary digest values. Key facts on our millage rate changes. So again, we do this every year. This is not something new. We've changed millage rates bef-, between, between different levies before. So, you know, that's part of being a responsible government, is seeing where your money needs to go for that current budget year. And that's why we do a budget every year, is to determine where we need the money the most in that year. We still have a hundred days of operations for each public safety fund, which has an emergency reserve, which is required in our policy. All of the public safety funds, emergency reserves are fully funded and they continue to grow due to vacancies or operational savings from year to year. After the reduction in the millage rate, these three funds will still continue to have an excess fund balance over the required one hundred days. Fire will have seven million, police will have five million, and EMS will have three million. Again, we used the shift in this millage rate between these, these public safety items and the capital projects to fund some drainage projects. And we were able to fund those drainage projects without increasing the millage rate by, because of this shift between, between the funds. The excess reserves in the three public safety departments will continue to provide for the public safety pay plan changes that we implemented two years ago. So there is a plan in place to split, to spend down some of those excess reserves in those department funds. And although the millage rate in these funds was reduced, they're still collecting more in property taxes than they did last year. And the county will continue to evaluate the needs of each department, the fund balances, and ensure the emergency reserves are funded and operating needs are met each year. This is an example of what a property tax would be for county-only property taxes. So on a house market valued at four hundred and fifty thousand, if you lived in the city, your county portion of your taxes would be one thousand forty-eight. If you lived on St. Simon's Island, it would be one thousand six hundred and fifty-one. And that's due to the different services you receive. And on St. Simon's, you receive fire and police services. In the city, they have their own fire and police department. their own fire and police department, which they charge a separate millage rate for. This is that same example and what your taxes would be, um, for your entire property tax bill, including the board of education and the city runs with taxes. So breakdown of the percentage of your tax bill by levying authority. So, um, depending on where you live, uh, for example, if you live in the outlying areas in District Two, thirty-four percent of your tax bill is, um, sent to the county, sixty-six percent is sent to the board of education, and nothing to the city because you don't live in the city. This is a history of our, um, general fund millage rate over the years. It's been steady for the last few years at three point eight six four. And we've continued to, uh, work to reduce that as we can. As you all know, we've had, um, you know, inflation in, in, uh, cost over the last several years on everything, and so we're working hard to keep our budget balanced without raising the millage rate when possible. This is a chart of where the money comes from. So I cannot hardly see that, but I believe it says forty-nine percent comes from property taxes and nineteen percent from sales tax. Um, and then a distribution from some other sources there, which includes grants, um, investment income, charges for services. This is a chart of how much revenue is generated by property taxes and the levy that it comes from. So forty-four percent of the property taxes that we collect fund the services in the general fund, ten percent fund capital projects this year, fifteen percent fire, nineteen percent police, and twelve percent EMS. And this is a breakdown of how the money is spent. So fifty-four percent of the money that, um, is in our budget is spent on personnel costs. And this is, um, everything from uniforms, salaries, benefits, um, health insurance, and all of that. Um, and then services, capital improvements, I believe, says eighteen percent, fifteen percent. Sorry, my eyes are getting worse. Um, and this is a breakdown of where the money is spent. So forty-seven percent of our budget is spent in public safety, seventeen percent in public works, eleven percent in culture and recreation, seven percent in general government, and nine percent in the judiciary And these are just the departments that the taxes pay for. So, um, the general fund pays for the sheriff, animal control, EMA, um, and then so forth in the rest of those areas, those different functions that we have. Um, these, these services are all funded by that, um, forty-four percent general fund. And then these are the special service districts that are funded by their own millage rate. And the reason that they, there are special service districts and, um, they have their own millage rates is because different districts in the county get different services. So some districts don't receive police services, some districts don't receive EMS services, and, um, they pay for their own outside of the county. So, uh, anytime there's a special service district, it's that way because we can't charge all the services across the board to every district. The M and O, which is the general fund, gets charged to every district. And that's all I have, and I'm available for any questions, if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions? I know this is the third time we've seen this.
Okay. Ms. Munson?
Uh, let's, uh, talk a little bit about the forty percent, uh, you know, that, that the taxes on, and the state's requirement to maintain that.
Okay. So, um, each year, we receive an audit by the Department of Revenue, and they look at where our property values fall in relation to market values. A couple of years ago, we were way below what the market values were on what we were taxing. And we were notified by the Department of Revenue that we had, uh, two years to correct that problem and bring our values up to as close to forty percent as possible. So the assessed value on a piece of property is four perc- forty percent. That you pay taxes on forty percent of your market value of your home. Um, so they want us to be, they want the market value, and the assessed value should be both as close to forty percent as possible. And that's what the job of the property assessor is, is to go out, look at, um, you know, look at homes and evaluate market values of similar homes, much like an appraisal company does whenever you're buying or selling a piece of property. You want to look at similar homes in similar, similar areas and determine what the average market value is. So we are required by law to be as close to forty percent as possible, but we are not allowed to be under thirty-eight percent. If we go under thirty-eight percent of market value, we lose all of our, um, abilities for state grant funding, for federal grant funding, um, and we ha- get slapped with all kinds of fines and issues from, from the state because they expect us to collect the money based on the property values in our area. They don't want us applying for grants to fund projects if we are not getting at least forty percent of the market value. Now, we have control over what the millage rate is. You all have control over what the millage rate is, but we don't have control over the property values. Those have to be set at between thirty-eight and forty percent. So again, a couple of years ago, we had, because the property values had risen so quickly in this area, um, and, and really all over, but this area had significant increases in market values, we were at thirty-one percent on our property tax digest. So the state came in, they gave us two years to correct it. We just got our review from, um, last year, the other day, and we are now at, um, right s- very slightly under thirty-eight percent. So we still have a little bit of making up to do to get us over that thirty-eight percent mark, um, but we, we're right there. We're so close. So that has been the reason why our digest values have gone up over the last couple of years, is because we are having to get in line per state law with the market values of the homes.
Ms. Munson, out of the one hundred and fifty-nine counties in the state of Georgia, where do we rank?
Um, we are, I, I have not done the review on everybody's millage rates for this year because they're still being adopted and that information isn't, um, published yet. But for last year, we were the third lowest on our general fund millage rate.
Third lowest in the state?
Mm-hmm.
Out of one hundred and fifty-nine counties?
Yes. And, and, you know, the reason that we are blessed to be able to do that is because we do have a, a area that, that has great property values. So we can have a lower millage rate, um, and still collect the money that we need to operate and do all the things that, that, uh, are required to, to provide the, the, uh, the beaches and all these things that we do to keep things up in this area, uh, safety.
Thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen? All right, thank you, Ms. Munson. All right, I'm going to ask that anyone who wants to come up and speak, please come up, state your name, and you'll have five minutes.
Based on the performance order this evening of ignoring the comments, and I believe this decision's probably already been made, but I'm going to go ahead and make some comments anyway.
Please.
And Mr. Bork, if you could speak close to the mic, please, so it'll go out far.
Yeah, you can, you can lift it up. It, it goes up and down. There you go. Would you please state your name one more time? I'm sorry.
Hugh Bork. We've got an increase in net property taxes, the digest. It's gone up, uh, the last year, published it in one of your charts on, on this pack that was put out. It's over two million dollars, okay? It's an increase. Over a billion dollars in three years. I understand the millage rate and all the hocus pocus that she just spoke to, all right? I want to know what's coming out of my pocket and what am I getting for it? And I didn't see anything in this package. Where's the money being spent? Fine, it's there, okay? And it probably meets some regulations. But it doesn't tell me what the mon- the additional money that's being collected, okay, based on the tax digest. What is that money being spent on? What it says to me out of this package is, we put in a request, all the departments put in their requests for their budget. She described that in her little round, uh, circle diagram, right? And then you go through and you scrub it out, well, what's there? Well, anybody that's been in the business, okay, the business world, you put in requests for more than what you want because you know it's going to be cut. I call it the budget fluff stuff, okay? How much of that is really scrubbed out? And if you guys really do it like it's stated in the package, give us some visibility of what that is, okay? Couple of times I dug into it in past years, it was truly fluff. That's stuff that wasn't going to get funded anyway. They just put it in to keep Bork asking for it year after year after year. So it doesn't represent a meaningful scrub in trying to keep the overall cost down. So I'm not really focused on millage rates here, guys. I'm talking about the total amount of money that goes. I think your chart showed forty-nine percent, parts you couldn't read. Forty-nine percent of the revenue that's generated comes from the tax digest, okay? But because that nu- amount is generated off the value of the property, okay? And only nineteen percent of that comes from sales tax, my illustration here is that the property owner is paying an inordinate amount based and being penalized, if you will, legally penalized, which really gets under my skin, penalized because the property values are going up, something I don't have any control over. Property value of the taxes on my properties, investment properties, have doubled in five years. Now, you talk about all this and the averages and whatever on a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, that's what comes out of my pocket, gentlemen, and that's my income that I live on. So I'm a little sensitive to what you guys are saying and to hook us with the, I'm not dispar- dis- have any dispersion on what she's, she presented, okay? But that's all government regulation, and when you get down to it based on property values, and you're right, we're very fortunate to have that, but the property value, property owners are paying a disproportionate of a number of, uh, of, uh, of, of the input into the revenue for the, uh, for the, uh, taxed, uh, taximp revenue. It's kind of ironic that this is, uh, a public hearing on the millage rates on the night you guys are going to vote on whether you're going to adopt them or not.
The third one, Mr. Bork. Third public hearing we've had.
I got it. But you haven't won, okay, on the day that you're going to adopt the, uh, proposal, okay? Does that make sense? Not, not, well, may in your mind, it doesn't to me. If you're going to ask for input, you ought to be able to bring it in, digest it, and then make, make the most as opposed to deal. Like I said, I walked to the podium, you guys had already made the decision of what you're going to vote on. So be it. There's a number of mentions in the package about what I'll call contingency funds or emergency reserve funds, et cetera. Fine, some of those are mandated by policy, good policy and whatever. But if you go down into the budget, you'll see a number of those funds where just about every department has a portion of it, of, of some money set aside for that. If you look statistically, most of those pieces will not occur at the same time, but everybody is setting that money aside. So my question is, why wouldn't you go back, if you want to budget or, or show the visibility, that's fine, that's how you guys want to conduct business. But should we be rolling the sum of all those subtotals into one, uh, budget or one, uh, yeah, budget proposal where it's basically double-dipping, in my opinion, okay? Will the fire and the sheriff have the same, uh, calamity or whatever and have to fund out a contingency? Maybe, maybe not. The probability of all that coming down at one time is very little. So my experience in budgeting, when you have those, while it's good to have it and know what it is, and somebody needs to manage that as a separate entity, meaning the, the aggregate of all of that in, in one bucket, to see if it's working out, and it'd probably take you a year or two to get your feel of it, and where does it have to go and, you know, give and takes in it. But to put every one of it in there at a sta- at a stated value, you have opened, you have opened, uh, overspent on contingency funds that doesn't need to be spent. It's, it's running up the amount of revenue that we're, or the mon- expense that we don't have to spend.
Well, I, I do, I do want to reply. Commissioner Neal and myself, and, um, maybe, maybe one other, we sat through a lot of the budget process. We saw what, what, what needed to be and what didn't need to be, and I promise you, we took out all we could take out.
Mr. Volski, my comment is, you don't have any visibility of it. I, I'm not saying you didn't. All I'm saying is, there's nothing in the package. What is our sources and what am I spending it on? I'm asking for what is the delta from the previous year and what did you cut out to get there? If you did, fine. I'm not saying you didn't. But I haven't seen anything of it. What am I spending my money on? You didn't answer that question, uh, Walter.
All right, I got you. I got you.
All right.
Hey, I'm li- I'm like you. I've got commercial property on St. Simon's. I, I'd not like taxes. And your time is up, too. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Number one, how are you?
We're good.
Am I doing good?
I'm, uh, Russell Wells. I'm new to the area. I've been a long time. I grew up in the area, and now I'm here owning a home here in Glen County. Somebody asked me what time it is. I said, Alan time. I said, anytime they ask me. I cannot disagree with him. I mean, things have gone up, or things have gone up, but we've all had to learn to do much less because of the cost going up. But I don't know the date of when that, uh, was performed, but currently, prices are not going up on homes. Uh, some are having a fire sale on them. I just don't see how you could have any increase whatsoever. You're just going to have to, you know, go with what's what and learn to do with less. We have the homeowner, the taxpayer, we have less to do with. Uh, everything costs much more. I don't think there should be any increase of any kind in payment from homeowners that's poor, forty-nine percent, you said?
We support forty-nine percent of that?
Yeah, I, I think forty-nine percent is enough. I don't see it needing to be increased. Fifty bucks for each homeowner. I don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, it's to you.
All right.
Well, Ms. Munson, is our, uh, is our budget, it is posted on our?
Yes, and, and that was one comment I was going to make, is unfortunately, the, due to state deadlines, the millage rate adoption does not coincide with the budget adoption. So all of the things that Mr. Bork was asking for would, is available during the budget process, and I'm happy to get you any of that. We have notes. We have the department requests. We have the second level cuts. We have the third level cuts. We have the fourth level and the fifth level before it makes it. So I'm happy to, you know, pull those reports for you and, um, and get you the information.
The rest of the stuff will be also included in the public.
And that would come, yeah, that would come in the budget process, not in the millage rate process.
All right. We vote on this here?
Yes.
All right, I need a motion, gentlemen?
And there should be a motion in your packets. I'm sorry, I didn't put it up there.
Didn't see it in the packet.
It's not in there.
No.
All right. Um, it's just, make a motion to, um, adopt the millage rates, um, as advertised.
Okay.
Or is to adopt the resolution to establish the twenty-twenty-five millage rates.
I can understand you.
Would you?
It's, it's a motion to consider, I'm sorry, a motion to adopt the resolution to establish the twenty-twenty-five millage rates for the Glen County Board of Commissioners.
All right. Still didn't hear you, but I, I would like to make a motion to adopt the twenty-twenty-five millage rate, uh, according to the published, uh, projection for the millage rate.
Close enough.
And, and that's in a form of a resolution in your packet, so you're adopting the resolution that does that.
Okay.
All right.
All right, you have a motion?
In a second.
Properly motioned in second. All in favor? Hang on, I'm writing. Okay, thank you. All right, number twenty-three, and this is under general business. Adopt a resolution accepting the board of education's millage rate as adopted by the board of education. Ms. Munson?
Um, state law requires that the board of commissioners accept the, um, board of education's resolution of their millage rate. Um, so their millage rate is listed in your, um, agenda packet, and they have also left their millage rate the same as it was last year. So we just need, it's a, it's a, uh, formality. We have to accept their, their millage rate to forward it to the state.
And that's sixty-one percent of your property taxes?
Correct.
Yeah. I was thinking it's more like sixty-six.
So we can't say no?
Um, if you say no, then no property di- tax digest gets sent to the state and none of us get our property taxes. So I'm sure Mr. Bork would be happy if you say no.
So.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a motion, please.
All right. Commissioner Duncan?
I'd like to offer a motion to adopt a resolution accepting Board of Education's millage rate as adopted by the Board of Education.
Second. Properly motioned in second. All in favor? Okay. Number twenty-four is approve a contract with the Department of Corrections for an inmate work detail from Long State Prison for an annual cost of fifty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and eighty cents per detail, with funding to be provided by the Public Works FY-26 operating budget, subject to the county attorney's approval. Mr. Robinson?
Good afternoon. Shawn Robinson, Public Works Director. Um, I'm here today asking for approval on a contract with Long State Prison for inmate detail. By leveraging inmate detail, we maximize limited Public Works funding, allowing the county to maintain more miles of ditch, road shoulder, and right-of-way areas. Hiring a dedicated maintenance crew for these tasks would, uh, would cost taxpayers several times more than this program. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I asked for this to be left off, for the Finance Committee agenda, um, because I, um...
Commissioner Booker, could you build a little closer to your mic? I've got old man here and down.
Okay. Um, I asked this to be left off, um, so we could vote on it. And, um, I, I am not supporting this. Um, but I have in the past for many years. But after working on ministries to help, um, these guys when they get out, um, I feel like the county's, um, investment in this, um, would be beneficial to them once they, once they are discharged. Um, and we have a lot of guys coming back to the community.
All right. Any other, anybody else? I will entertain a motion, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer the motion to approve the contract with the Department of Corrections for inmate work detail from Long State Prison at the annual cost of fifty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and eighty cents per detail, with funding to be provided by the Public Works FY-26 operating budget, subject to the county attorney's approval.
I'll second. Okay. Number twenty-four has been properly motioned in second. All in favor? Six against. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you.
All right. Public comment period. Mr. Russell Wells has signed up to speak for public comment. Is he here?
Hi, Mr. Wilson.
Okay. You'll come forward, state your name one more time, and you'll have five minutes. If you'll pull that mic down a little bit. I think it was a little high just a minute ago. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is that good for everyone?
Perfect. Much better.
Oh, thank you. I feel more relaxed now having to bend over, which I thought I had sooner. I'm Russell Eric Wells. My wife is, uh, Linda Fitzgerald Wells. We have a great family, children gone and gone. I, uh, spent the last forty-seven years traveling the globe on oil gas projects and oil gas disasters. And it's good to be home in Georgia. Man, I can't tell you how happy I am to be back home. And, uh, to be in Glen County. We have so much to offer. It's just a pleasure to be back here, back home, and in Glen County. I already mentioned that one time, but I'm serious about that. That's the only time that I have now. Um, I purchased, my wife and I, in, uh, Majestic Oaks. That's, uh, a subdivision. Uh, do you call it southwest, southeast? Anyway, it's the edge of twenty-nine. And it's, uh, one-five-eight Majestic Oaks Drive, Brunswick, Georgia, three-one-five-two-three. We purchased in December. Everything changed hands, um, February, March-ish, April. I don't even know that that property there is suitable to build on, uh, that they're doing, but everything that they have built has caused, caused all the watershed from that property to be shed through us existing homeowners, through our side yards, backyards, through the front. All the sand's coming to the street. Their elevation has to be at least sixteen inches higher than our foundations. I don't see how that could be possible. But everything surrounding the perimeter right now of that property are only vegetation that survived the wetlands. And I just don't know. Uh, you can't build on wetlands. So I have a few questions, if you don't mind. Uh, I have all the video. I've been out there in the rain, walking through it, so you can see the speed of the water flow. Um, it's just incredible, the devastation and the damage it's doing to the existing homeowners who've been there since two thousand and six, our houses were built that long ago. I don't even know if there's any oversight. But here's the questions that I have. I mean, they've already washed up my driveway. I, I mean, I have to take action. I'm going to take action, and I'm going to protect my property. Know that, that is happening. But I do have questions on things that I cannot control. I can control my perimeter and what's inside of it, but what I can control is it being allowed to continue. But I know all of you can, and you know what needs to be done. So my question is, question is, one of my questions is, uh, who's surveyed from, you know, Glen County, the property's suitability to even be built on in the first place? The building of Phase Two, uh, you know? And was it classified as wetlands? Was that changed? And if it was changed, when? Be, you know, I just, uh, something's wrong with the elevation. And the only drainage plan in place is to drain through us existing homeowners, destroying our foundations and our brick driveways, our brick patios. I mean, it's quite a nice house I have. I love it. And who approved the elevation change from being on the same elevation as the homes that are currently existing to over sixteen inches? It couldn't be even higher than that. I mean, it is a huge difference. There, the tracks of the bulldozers they have sitting on the property, they're about halfway to houses that are currently built, the ones they just built. It's visually easy to see that is happening. So that's another question I have. Who, uh, agreed for them to build on a higher elevation than we are and watershed through our properties? That's, that is not legal. Um, so, yeah, I, I really want to know who approved that drainage plan for that subdivision to drain through the properties? Everything collapsed this last week with all the rain we had. We, well, it's been raining for fourteen days. It really doesn't matter the length of time it rains. What matters is the damage it creates by someone else that's negligent. And, and, and that being the only plan, it drains off the back, it goes where it goes. Everything in that subdivision collapsed. There were rivers that were cut through. What they had built is pads and everything, et cetera. It's, it's incredible. It collapsed on all their roads. They were impassable, everything they put in. Uh, all of that sand and water, it goes to our properties first. And what little does drain from their property of the road that they just put in, all of that carries sand with it, and it's all going into our culverts, which is going to call, was it Public Works? We're talking about money went to for drainage and all that? They're responsible for that. The Public Works or whatever.
If, if you would, could you wrap up? Because we're over five minutes.
All right, I, I, yes, I will.
Thank you.
Uh, it's going to come out of our budget, the county's budget, and not the builder to put back and correct what they've destroyed. Uh, you could pull the permits immediately for that project and stop everything until it's restored safely and restored in a condition that Public Works doesn't have to dig out the culverts at our county expense and their expense. Please pull the permits and do an immediate cease and desist by pulling the permits, please. And thank you. So good to be home. I appreciate it. I'm still excited to be home.
All right. Mr. Attorney, do we have any items for executive session?
No, sir.
Okay. In that case, gentlemen, I will need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. That came from different areas. Okay. Motion to adjourn properly. Motioned in second. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you.